All right, good evening everyone and welcome to our May 13th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. It is now 6:30 and I would like to ask everyone to stand with us as Alderman Young opens us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, thank you for this city, the opportunity these men and women give of their time, Lord, to do the city's business. We thank you for that. God, I pray that you would watch over all those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit and we pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, moving along, I will ask if the Commissioners have read the minutes from the April meeting and if there's any questions, comments, or a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, all right. If we have a roll call, please.
Greg Easton.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Josh McNeil. Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
All right, thank you, and we will start new business, public hearing. If Director Taylor will gladly present the stealing plan development.
David Bray with the Bray Firm is requesting approval of, for a favorable recommendation for a plan development to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for a 62 lot residential plan development. The property will be located, or is located at 4570 Billy Mayor Road and it is within the RS-18 Residential Zoning District. The property is currently 31.51 acres in size and once divided, the properties will, the lots will range from 12,000 square feet to 1.28 acres. There will be two open common space lots. Approval of a PD will allow smaller lots than the zoning currently requires, which is 18,000 square feet, reduce and reduce yard setbacks. The PD does comply with the no more than two units per acre requirement of the zoning ordinance. Stormed water detention will be on common open space B and that is also part of the Green Belt area. Common open space A will be retained for a subdivision entrance sign and landscaping. A homeowners association will be required to maintain all common areas and amenities of the subdivision. Both the final and construction plans will be brought back to this commission for approval. Therefore, we recommend approval of this plan development for a favorable recommendation with the conditions as listed in the report.
All right, I'll ask if any Commissioners have any questions for Director Taylor?
I did want to ask a question about the wildlife, I think. I haven't seen that before in any plan before.
The wildlife?
Yeah, it had something about wildlife being, that was mentioned about wildlife being relocated or something.
Uh huh.
In the pond, you know, near the detention pond, I mean, near the pond.
Right.
Is that, what does that really entail?
Imagine that, that's a Tennessee Department of Environmental Requirement.
Okay.
I'm not sure what that would entail. Other cities I've worked for, there was a trapping and relocation of those animals, especially if they were an endangered species. I'm not exactly familiar with what Tennessee requires to be relocated, probably endangered species as well. Maybe engineering could enlighten us on that.
This is regarding the wildlife and water?
Near the, near the pond?
Near the, you know, like the existing?
Existing pond, yes.
Yeah, we've got a comment.
I think it's number 16.
Yeah, one of the engineers, thank you, thank you Curtis, we've got an engineering condition in there, requesting, existing pond outline shall be shown, a TDEC permit may be required regarding the filling of the pond and the relocation of natural wildlife. So, kind of ignorant on that too, but I do remember in the past, we have mucked out several ponds and in those situations, the fish were removed in certain cases and sometimes, in certain cases, the public was invited and the property owner was involved in that. So, we're going to make the developer follow whatever the TDEC or, what is it, TDEC, thank you Sam, TWRA requirements would be for that.
Okay, thank you.
On the condition 17, again, I've not seen this before, what is a trip generation study would be required?
David, that's basically, it's basically a traffic study.
Oh, okay.
In that area that the county is asking for, so.
Okay. Hadn't seen the terminology before, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, is the applicant here? You'll come forward, say your name and address for the record.
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Pleasant North Bartlett. We're in agreement with all the conditions, whoever had the question about condition 16. We've actually had a preliminary conversation with TDEC about this. They did not think an ARAP, which is Aquatic Resource Alteration Permit, would be required due to the size of this, but when we get to the level of construction plans, we will have to have a notice of coverage and, and so they'll, they'll review it again at that time and they may require that permit at that time.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any other questions you guys have. The owner of the property is here along with, along with the potential developer.
All right, Melissa, since this is a public hearing, do we open this up now to the public? Or I'll even ask our attorney here, if he, if that's what we need to do. Ed, do we need to open this up now to the public?
Yeah.
Twenty minutes of rehearsal.
Okay, yeah, and I'll read it, I just, now is the time to do that, is that correct?
No, this is about opening, what is the second?
Public hearing?
Yes.
So, I mean, they would be able to come forward and speak. Okay, all right. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward now at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Brad Thompson, I'm at 4577 Billy Mayor Road. Many of you may know that as St. Columba Episcopal Camp and Retreat Center. I am the Executive Director there. I don't particularly subscribe to, you know, trying to dictate what people do with land that is not mine or ours or any of that, but I certainly recognize that we're in a part of the Bartlett area that is one of the few remaining rural feeling locations. And so as St. Columba's guests and campers arrive, very commonly, our guests arrive and they note the, the feeling of letting go of outside pressures. And I certainly, as, as somebody who lives there as well, know that pulling into our property from a rural feeling road certainly helps to enhance that. And so, the handful of things that I would just love to advise and certainly suggest is retention of mature trees along Billy Mayor Road may very well enhance the ability for that feeling to remain. I acknowledge that when, you know, larger developments come in, very often, there is a fair bit of clear cutting. And so I'm mindful that it is certainly something that will not affect St. Columba. We are a fenced in property, we have ample pine forest right in front, so we're not talking about any sort of visual, sort of, you know, catastrophe for our ministry. But again, I just want to note that along Billy Mayor Road, that is a single or a two lane road, we would love to keep it that way if possible. And so I acknowledge that, you know, when we're putting 62 lots in, that's 120 cars extra a day, that's extra trash coming out of those cars, things like that. And again, it's a part of Bartlett that remains one of the more rural feeling places. So, I stand just to say that we hope that we do this in the right way and acknowledge that there's ways that we can do that, either with fencing and retention of mature trees, but certainly noting that there is a pond there and being responsible for the property immediately across the street is the hope and expectation that a water retention plan for where that water would go within that watershed should be part of this plan and something the city looks to, to make sure and is done well and done right. So, thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? All right, seeing no one coming forward, that will close the public hearing. Are there any questions among the Commissioners? That will close the public hearing. Are there any questions among the Commissioners or is there a motion for approval or denial?
By the way, we did not receive any correspondence in relation to this.
Great, thank you, sorry, I forgot to ask.
If there's no other questions or comments, I move we approve with the recommendations from staff.
Second.
All right, having a motion in second, if I can get a roll call, please.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
All right, that concludes the new business. Moving to final plans, Director Taylor will present item number two, the Bartlett Corporate Park East Phase Two.
David Baker with Fisher and Arnold is requesting Planning Commission approval of a revised final plan for the re-subdivision of Lot 43B of the Bartlett Corporate Park East Phase Two subdivision. It is the location of Hobby Lobby and the New York Suit Exchange, also located at 7986 Highway 64, within the CH Business Highway Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to re-subdivide the 11.28 acre lot where Hobby Lobby and the New York Suit Exchange is located on two separate commercial lots. Hobby Lobby will be on Lot 23B, which will be 6.28 acres, and the New York Suit Exchange will be on Lot 23C, which is five acres. Access to the subdivision will be from existing driveways on Highway 64 and Stage Hills Boulevard. The applicant will be required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to get a lot with variances at the road frontage along Stage Hill and Highway 64. Right now, the only frontage they have is their driveway entrances, which are 50 feet wide, and the requirement is for them to be 80 feet, they need 80 feet of road frontage. This is a problem that has existed with this subdivision over the years and the subdivision has been re-subdivided several times. And so this is the opportunity to actually clean up the actual subdivision and bring it into conformity. With that being said, we recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the report.
All right, are there any questions for the Director from the Commissioners?
I did have one, Chairman.
Yes.
I did have a question, I'm sorry, I did have a question about the five foot easement we are not going to require for this.
So, we tried to get MLGW to write a letter releasing that. Usually, all lots that are created have a minimum five foot utility set aside, all residential lots, all commercial lots. Right now, there is not one, there is no utility there where they're going to divide. I talked to MLGW and they expressed because there isn't nothing there right now, that they're not going to write a letter and they didn't want a record of it, is the way it was told to me. So, it's up to you all if you want to approve it based on our engineer being in agreement with that requirement.
It's an existing building and so the access for communication lines is already available. So it's kind of one of those situations where it doesn't need the typical five foot utility easement, which is typically for communication lines. Like, the only reason you would need that is if that building were to go away, those utility easements wouldn't be there and the owner of that site could then request, could grant an easement for that purpose, but at the moment, there's, there's no need for that.
Okay, thank you.
Now I've got one question, maybe a silly question, but that is one building, so I'm assuming this line's going to go right down the middle of where these two buildings abut? Is that correct?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, all right.
The reason being Hobby Lobby wants to own their own lot and building.
Sure, and that's to sell off in the future?
Yes.
Potentially, okay. I'm just wondering, and you probably don't know this, and it may be the owner of the building, but who takes ownership of that demising wall between the two if something happens? If it's going to be on two diff, if it's going to split the property?
Good question. I do not know that. I don't know if it's one wall or if it's two walls abutting each other, not sure.
Looking at the aerial?
Yeah, you can't tell, yeah, you can't tell, really.
I'm going to say it appears that the New York Stock Exchange building connects into, because I'm looking at the parapet wall and for Hobby Lobby and it looks like it was its own wall originally, without going back. I'm, I'm just curious, and it may be their wall.
Right.
And like I said, then the New York Stock Exchange building abutted it, but I'm, I would have to think somebody had to have an agreement at some point in time to do that.
The applicant is here, so that would be a great question for the applicant.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Sorry. All right, any other questions for Director Taylor? All right, is the applicant here? Could you please come forward? Thank you, sir, and if you could please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is David Baker, I'm with Fisher and Arnold. Address for the record is 9180 Crestwind Hills Drive, Memphis 38125. Of all the questions to get asked, that is one I do not know. I do know that the wall, the new property line is, the wall is going to be on the Hobby Lobby side, so.
Right.
So they would take full ownership and, and all that, so I guess we could add a note to the plat that, to the fact of working out the shared wall agreement should any redevelopment occur or something like that.
Okay, all right. It's just my past experience in development like that.
That's a very good point.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Should that comment be incorporated into whatever recommendation somebody on the board wants to make?
I would think that would be a good idea, though it doesn't matter to us, but, or probably even the city, but I think the owner would want that in their documentation. So that if New York Stock Exchange punches a hole in that wall.
Responsibility.
There's some responsibility there, exactly. And there may already be something there that when it was built, I just don't know that. Nobody knows that, so I will let that come from them unless somebody else makes a comment to make that a point.
If we include it in this, would it, how is the city, you got a dog in that fight, if you will?
That's what I'm saying, we, we wouldn't.
Okay, that's what it's.
At least I don't think we would, unless Ed wants to say we would, but I don't think we would.
Therefore, it wouldn't, we wouldn't need to put any language in there.
That's what.
Just keep it straight, okay.
Yep, yep.
You had to say some, hey.
I can't. Like I said, when I started this question off, I said it's a silly question, but I wanted to ask.
Would it hold any, I did have a question, I mean, would it hold any weight if we did that? A planning commission puts that in there, so what legal weight does that have?
We could, if, if we did, then he would have to put, they would have to put it on the plat.
Put a note on the plat.
Put a note on the plat.
Okay.
And that gives the owner of that building some saving grace in the future.
Okay.
For somebody who hadn't thought about that.
Okay.
So it could be a good idea.
It could be, but again, like Jack said, we, we don't have a fight in that, the City of Bartlett don't have a fight in that.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, from the Commissioners.
I move we approve.
Second.
There we go. All right, have a motion in a second, if I can get a roll call, please.
Do you, do y'all want to add that condition, that they need to make a note on the plat about the ownership of the wall?
Since she made a motion, would you like to add that?
Sure, add it, like I say, if it, if it's going to happen, it will happen, if it's Murphy's Law.
Second, from what you just said.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second with the added stipulation?
So we're going to vote twice?
No.
No.
Just once, added condition. Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay, great, and that passes. All right, item number three, Ron and Yolanda Taylor subdivision, Director Taylor will present that, please.
Lance Lanier with Lanier Land Surveying is requesting Planning Commission approval of a final plan for the two lot Ron and Yolanda Taylor subdivision. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Brunswick and New Brunswick Roads within the RE Residential Estate Zoning Districts. The property was initially a four acre parcel of land on Brunswick Road that got divided into two lots in conjunction with the Windsor Park development and the realignment of Brunswick and New Brunswick Roads. Basically, the lots are pre-existing non-conforming, being that they were never put into an official subdivision. Lot one is located west of New Brunswick Road and it is 2.415 acres. Lot two is located east of New Brunswick Road and north of the realignment of Brunswick Road and it is .64 acres. Access to Lot one will be from a driveway apron on New Brunswick Road. Access to Lot two will be from a driveway apron off of New Brunswick Road or Brunswick Road. Both lots already have water and sewer taps, so we believe that the plan was always that these would be developed into single family residential properties. However, the buyer of Lot two will need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a lot sized variance because it is located in the RE Residential Estate Zoning District where it requires that lots have to be one acre, but this leftover piece was left at .64 acres. Therefore, staff has reviewed the application and we recommend approval with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Director.
And we have, even though this isn't a public hearing, we've had some opposition from the neighbors about putting a house on Lot two.
Is there any questions from the Commissioners for Director Taylor?
What, what size land is available for a house with this configuration? Is it right front, is it 3897, is that good, I guess?
Yes, it's on, yeah, that's the buildable area.
Got it, okay.
And they can get around a 3,000 square foot house and I believe that's what they're planning to do on that lot.
Right in front, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, is the applicant here? Yes, if you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Lance Lanier with Lanier Land Surveying, 4090 Airline Road East Tennessee.
Okay, have you read the comments from staff?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree with those?
Yes, sir, we're in agreement.
Okay, all right, are there any comments that Commissioners have for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion from the Commissioners for either approval or denial of this applicant or application?
Move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for approval in a second, if we can get a roll call?
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
And I will ask for the record, probably should have had this before the motion, but if you wouldn't mind, do you have a copy of those letters?
We do not, because those were in relation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, public hearing.
Okay, okay, so those will be read at the?
Yes.
BZA, okay, all right. So this now just allows that to go forward to the BZA?
Right.
Okay, all right. All right, and I guess that will come back here with site plan, for site plan approval, is that?
Not for a residential home?
Not for residential, okay, okay, all right, all right, thank you. All right, and I believe the last item here on the agenda is for landmark for the Klink Home. Ms. Director Taylor will present that.
Back in March, back on March 18th, 2024, the Bartlett Historic Preservation Commission made a favorable, or made a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to accept the Klink Home as a local landmark. It, it's a property that's located in our historic district. Here tonight is Alderman Quinn, he is on that board and he would like to talk to you about the Klink Home. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm great, thank y'all for everything and I'm told cam, I'm really curious about that joining wall between those buildings. That's really fascinating. So, there's some, well, are there any pictures of the Klink House that you, okay, just, okay, so I think we're all familiar with the Klink name and the Bartlett history, just put together a little, little bit about him. In 1891, William Bernard Klink, who was a German immigrant who came here from Davidson County, paid $1,400 to buy 68 acres around the stage, stage old Brownsville area, almost to where, yeah, I know, that's amazing, and the swamp house was near Wood Dollar Generals today. They started a dairy operation and they moved their, not the cows, but the operation of making milk and butter and ice cream to Memphis and that became the famous Klink Brothers. And in the 1950s, they joined with Baskin Robbins to make the current Baskin Robbins ice cream. So I always tell people, every time you have a little Baskin Robbins, you're having a little bit of Bartlett, Bartlett history. The house was built in 1913, it's called the Memphis Cottage Style, which is a variation of the Craftsman type homes that you could order from Sears at the time. Robert Hannah Klink and his family built the home and they had one son, Bob, was part of the Klink Dairies and unfortunately, he died in a accidental shotgun discharge during a hunting, hunting expedition when he was 29 years old, but his widow Ruth lived there until her death in 1998. Family name, Milan, bought the house in 2000, made a lot of good changes to the property, a lot of TLC to bring it up to date, and then the current owners, the Seton. And then the current owners, the Setons, have really taken great care of the property, and they made some really nice additions to it that you may have noticed that blend in almost seamlessly to the original nineteen-thirteen structure. And they've done a really, a lot of nice landscaping. And so they brought this before the commission to make it a Bartlett historical landmark. And I'd like y'all to have a favorable recommendation for that. Any questions about the Klink, sir?
I just want to make a comment. I appreciate the historic commission bringing this landmark ahead, and we appreciate that research. I hope they went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hoping to have more. It'd be nice to have a little, little walking tour up and down the area with, with the landmark signs eventually.
Sounds great. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, thank y'all.
All right, if there is a motion on the floor for approval?
Make a motion we approve?
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. If I can get a roll call, please.
Paul Kaiser?
Yes.
David Hunt?
Yes.
Jim Lamb?
Yes.
Ken Demetrio?
Yes.
Jack Young?
Yes.
Curtis Sigler?
Yes.
All right, and that is it. If there is anybody from the public that would like to speak for open discussion?
We had two forms filled out. I don't remember which order they were given to me, so I'm sorry. But the first one is Shannon Rue wanting to speak about the northeast corner of Brunswick Road.
Okay.
And so it's three minutes to speak.
Yes, we'll have a total of twenty minutes and three minutes per person.
I don't know if the map is still, Shannon Rue, excuse me, thirty-six ninety-six Brunswick Road. The map from the Yolanda Taylor and Ronald Taylor Development, that little corner, my driveway is right there. Been there since nineteen eighty-three. And obviously, everybody needs a place to live, not here complaining about that. But the, I've got some covenants from when the old road went through. That was a, I think agricultural was the way it was owned, that property originally. And ours is part of a fifteen-lot subdivision and had covenants and stuff with setbacks and things. Minimum square footages and all. Do you want, do I give copies? Would y'all like that now, or is that for another time, or just, yeah, if anybody needs those. But square footage of the house is listed on there and minimum setback of a hundred-and-fifty feet from the road. So it's sort of a, they're all four and five-acre lots, and that's actually, you know, kind of small. The next guest speaker will, has just moved into a brand-new house, and they'll look out their front door into someone's backyard. It's kind of, kind of odd on that corner. And I was a little concerned, too. It's such a, that map really didn't do justice. The curve is really, it comes to a little points on the corner. And I don't know how you quite, how close to the corner the driveway entrance would have to be to get access, you know, what those kind of deals are. So just look at that, and if you would, and things, one of the number seven on there was if you have a barn, which not everybody's going to have a barn, but they want that three-hundred-and-fifty-foot from the road frontage. So there's just, kind of, kind of was a rural area to begin with, so change comes. Thank you.
That this will go in front of the BZA. So you would have another chance to speak at that as well before they approve it. Anybody else like to come forward?
We have Jeff Foreman with the same topic.
Jeff Foreman, thirty-six twenty-eight Brunswick Road. Again, the plot we're talking about now, my, my wife and I just built our dream home. And we built it with the thought that the lot right in front of us was not buildable because it was point-six-four acres as opposed to the, the minimum one acre. So we built a house and then see a for-sale sign and that sort of thing. So I would like to oppose the, I guess, the separating of, you've created another lot that doesn't fit the zoning requirement. So I do oppose that. I understand that this may not be the time to discuss it, but I do want to have my opposition out there, and we'll be at the next hearing.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Foreman. All right, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Is there any chair commissioners that has anything they'd like to bring up? Because I do have one. Alderman Quinn posted a video on Facebook of the five-way intersection. I'm not sure if anyone saw that or not, but I did. And it had a solution of what that could potentially look like. I'm not sure where it goes from there, but if you have Facebook, I would ask you to go to his Facebook page and take a look at that and watch that video. Because I think of a issue that has been boiling or, you know, we've had a few items come in front of us about that intersection at the railroad track and how it could be redesigned. I thought that was a very well-put-together thought in how that could happen. Now, whether that would be the last bit of how that would be designed, I don't know. That would have to go to engineering and staff and what have you. But again, the people that put that together, I thought, did a very good job, so. I'm not sure. I don't know if Alderman Quinn has any more information on that, or staff has anything on that. And it was one of those potential bad intersection things. And it was, and I kind of tagged on to that.
What I saw, it appeared to be roundabouts at each of those?
No, no, no.
That's what it said. I mean, that's what it said.
Not the one that Alderman Quinn posted the day before yesterday. I think it was Sunday, maybe.
It mentioned the word roundabout in there, but the design was not a roundabout.
Okay, if it mentioned it, I missed that, but I was looking at the picture.
So it's one idea?
Yes.
For, it's one idea.
Yeah, exactly. Not saying it's the best, but in my opinion, I thought it was pretty good. So anyways, if you hadn't seen it, I'd suggest you go take a look at it. All right? Anything else? If not, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.